You could be the township secretary. Go for it.
We'll begin the meeting, but I'd like to, as always, start with a pledge of allegiance, please.
Let the allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you for taking the time to be here. We have a couple of agenda items here. One, we're going to, I think we'll go with the second one first here. Under our new business, we have a letter to be signed, a motion to approve a letter to be signed, to consider taking out a loan for $125,000 from First National Bank of Pennsylvania. And it's simple. Yeah, there it is, it's on the back. And I'm just looking for a motion that would do that.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second the motion.
I'm going to vote against it.
Okay. Aye.
Aye. And now unfinished business. As we all know, we closed the hearing, so, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Solicitor, actually, we're not here to take in any more information per se concerning the hearing itself, but to render a decision. We do have the right, with the cure to amendment, to consider adding, if approved, considering adding some conditions even this evening, okay? And I'm going to refer to our solicitor in that regard, but we are here now and... What?
Well, I just, you typically have a period for comment on items on the agenda before you start or not.
Each item, did you want to comment on the first item? Okay, a good way of doing that is letting me know, Marty.
Oh.
Okay, I mean, you're sitting out of my eyesight, and I guess you were going like that, I'm not sure. But, okay, your comments on the first item.
They don't take like two minutes, uh, no, it'll be on the second then, on the cure of amendment.
No, no, we're not at, we're not at the cure of amendment.
Okay.
No, I did, I took that, Marty, I put that second.
Just tell me when I can, if you look at the agenda, the first public comment section are comments on the agenda, not comments on the items on the agenda. So, the first argument is, do you have any comments on the agenda, like if you're included, include that, or something like that, and then the public comments you see are later, so...
And what I did very simply was I took under new business, the looking for proposal to approve signing for a request of taking out a loan of $125,000 at First National Bank of Pennsylvania. Is that what you want to comment on?
No.
Well, do you have, do you have a copy of the agenda, Marty?
No.
Should have one.
I just gave him one, he gave it back to me.
Oh, yeah. He doesn't need one. Okay, so, here we are, it's now under unfinished business again. The cure of zoning ordinance amendment request of Water Gap Capital Partners LLC. Blanc, can you get going on this page?
Yes, Mr. Chair, you are correct that the hearing was closed on, I believe, April 11, if I'm not mistaken. August, or, April, I'm okay, August 11. However, if you want, you can certainly take brief arguments from the sides. However, they've all filed briefs, as they did with the Section 302 hearing, but we have the benefit of those briefs in this matter. And, as you indicated, you can, the supervisors, if you believe that the cure to amendment has validity, you can accept the cure to amendments as proposed. You can make revisions to the cure to amendment. Now, you said conditions, technically, it's revisions. You can make revisions to the cure to amendment and adopt that, or you can not adopt the cure to amendment at all. So, that's where we are, understand if someone's going to make a motion, a motion second, and then public comment. And I understand, you may say, well, we got to go through all these comments again, but that's the way it is. We don't have any choice about that, so, if someone's prepared to make a motion...
Mr. Carasek, before we do that, I have something I need to bring to the attention of the board. Chair. Residents in and around this facility have been approached by a private investigator who has represented himself, have been hired by the supervisors, and has interviewed people, has conducted surveillance, and appears to have, between the last hearing and now, worked on behalf of the supervisors or more of the supervisors, to gather additional information relative to this proceeding. And we would like to know, number one, is that the case? Is there a private investigator that was hired by the supervisors? And number two, has any information been given by this private investigator to the board? Because if it was, it was done outside of the context of the hearing, and I think that's problematic, at least from my point of view.
Let me say to you that a private investigator was hired, had nothing to do with this particular matter, had to do with what is occurring at the premises with respect to this particular activity. So, it really did not deal with this cure amendment as such.
Well, that's, we've raised, we've offered testimony and we've raised issues about what's ongoing as a property right now, in fact, there was focus testimony for last year and by that. So, my opinion is that the supervisors have received information from a private investigator, and so far, you haven't said they have. But I think we're entitled to know, you know, who the investigator is, and we're also entitled to cross-examine him and see whatever documents or whatever video or whatever photographs he gave to the supervisor. Because obviously, that's going to be, that's going to be, whether we say it's not germane to this or not, if they know about it now, and touches upon issues we offer testimony on, I think we have a right to see that, we have a right to cross-examine, we have a right to look at the documents that have been submitted.
All right, well, that's your position, the township's position would be that it's an investigation, it is not subject to disclosure under the P.A. Open Records Act, unless the supervisors want to give it. They can, and... And I don't know what else to say about that, other than that.
Oh, is there, is there an investigative report?
Yes, a report was received at 11:00 p.m. last night.
Have all the supervisors looked at it?
That I don't know.
We're in the process, yes, we're in the process of looking at it. It was, I won't say extensive, maybe that's an exaggeration, but it's a read, and it's something that you take your time to read, so we understand it, Jim. The other thing is, there were videos also. They were, one was over an hour, and another was almost an hour. And we really just tried to put one on and speed through it, simply because we had this meeting coming up at 4 o'clock.
If I could ask if the purpose of hiring an investigator wasn't for this proceeding, what purpose was it for?
I don't have any comment, maybe my solicitor would.
The purpose was to determine if the comments that were made by the neighbors were accurate or not, commenting on the hearing or not, there was any substance to those, or whether there was something more or something less.
So, the topic's...
Because what's happening now has nothing to do with the proposed cure to amendment, in my opinion. That has something completely different to do with. This is a proposed cure to amendment, should the amendment be allowed. I don't think what's happening now has any relevance to that issue.
Okay, well, let me, let me just interrupt. At that last meeting, yes, there was a lot of personal input on what we considered matters of concern. And the biggest problem was off-site, unsupervised gatherings, if you will, trespassing. I personally felt that that was something we wanted to verify. That's all, nothing to do with the cure to amendment. The cure to amendment flows, and we did, please let me finish. Were you, Marty, his hand was up first. And I asked him to let me finish, okay? And so, basically, that was the intent of it. Okay, yes, sir.
I'm, I guess I'm addressing this and taking a different tact to Mr. Carasek. Mr. Carasek, if this cure to amendment was to pass, it's obviously conceivable there would be a conditional use application by Mr. Wolf's client, correct?
There would have to be a conditional, the cure to amendment, unless it's changed, the cure to amendment says this is...
A conditional use.
A conditional use proceeding.
So, the second step would be a conditional use hearing.
Correct.
Would you agree that, since this investigative report apparently deals with activities at the site run by Mr. Wolf's clients, who would be making the conditional use application, that that report would be relevant to the conditional use hearing?
It might be relevant, but I don't know if it's disclosable.
If it's evidence the board would consider at the conditional use hearing, would you have to disclose it?
Unless you're telling me that when it says a non-criminal investigation under the P.A. Open Records Act is not disclosable, then I would say yes, but that's not how the P.A. Open Records Act reads. Non-criminal investigations are not subject to disclosure.
Would you not agree that any evidence, any factual evidence relied on by the board and supervisors in making any decision, that certainly a conditional use decision, would have to be disclosed to the parties and have to be part of the record?
If that's being used, yes, I would agree that if that's being used, it would have to be, be part of the record, maybe not necessarily disclosed.
But I think, if it's part of the record, isn't it disclosed to the board?
Well, not necessarily, that portion could be, could be disclosed, but... And again, you, you know, you were certainly welcome to subpoena the private investigator on your own and have testified for you, we can't prevent that from occurring.
You know, we learned about this only today, so it wasn't tied to this...
Let me say that we only today received, so, I'm not going to answer for any of, for the three of us, that's for sure, but I'm not going to make any comments until I actually get to know it, see it, and watch those DVDs. Try to find a place to play a DVD.
But just, so I understand, but I don't want to put words in your mouth, Mr. Barry.
Don't ever do that.
It sounded like...
Please don't put words in my mouth, sir.
I'm not, which is why I'm asking a question. It sounded like you were saying that at least you yourself had reviewed part of the videos.
All I did was I put a video on to take a quick look through it, yes. We had them, we had them in here. By the way, they, I guess they got here around 3 o'clock this afternoon. Okay? What's that got to do, I want to put words in your mouth. What does that have to do with what we're here to do about the cure to amendment?
I don't know that until I ask the questions, Mr. Barry. So, my follow-up question would be to the other two supervisors, have either of them prior to, right now, reviewed the report or reviewed the video?
Yeah, we, that's what I said, I said, yes.
Okay. I would join in Mr. Ferreri's objection, and I would also make the point that I think it's also, has to be disclosed as part of the conditional use application.
Okay, and that's really noted, and I think we'll have an answer to you, most likely through our solicitor. But do we go further with this this evening, or do we go right to the point of the cure to amendment? Yes, sir. Amendment? Yes, sir.
Fair, I guess, the continuing objections I had during the hearing on these proceedings relative to testimony as being irrelevant to the actual proposed use versus current use of property, I think, by simple fact, the surveillance that was done over investigation can only relate to the current use, not the proposed, which again, is the subject of the Curetive. So, I think those, anything within that report would not be germane to the decision today when the Curetive Amendment was passed, you said it not yet, on the property.
This is Marshall, this is Marshall Anders, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I disagree with your solicitor, because if the purpose of the investigation was to investigate what people testified at the last hearing, and the board of supervisors now has it in its possession, how does the general public know that the board of supervisors hasn't relied upon it, hasn't acted upon it, and how do the individuals who testified know whether their credibility is being attacked and how it's being attacked? That proceeding was part of the Curetive Amendment, and to investigate what they said is part of, then now, part of the Curetive Amendment. If you didn't, if you didn't believe their testimony and had to send an investigator out there, or you believed their testimony and had to send, that's part of the hearing. And you're now considering evidence that is not of record in deciding whether or not to adopt the Curetive Amendment? Because that's what the testimony was about, whether it was detrimental to the public safety and welfare. Thank you.
Curetive Amendment was not about, was it detrimental to the health and welfare and safety of the public, but, oh, go on, you have a question?
Yes, since we're talking about, I have a couple of points, but one is, you know, obviously, you know, I put in, write the note request yesterday, and we thought it too, when it was approved in minutes, what the work was in their proposal, and correct, how much the contract was. So, I don't know-
I'm sorry, Marty, I didn't hear the last part.
A copy of the signed contract with the detective. And another thing I actually wanted to mention too, then, in regard to the private detective, was that the volumes of information I've sent to the supervisors in emails, starting back in March, in regard to, you know, drug deliveries, my conversation with the pharmacist, and my attempt to set up a reservation at the building, you guys are all aware of that, it's all in emails, and yet I wasn't, I wasn't contacted by this private investigator.
Well, Marty, that's a good point, but was, it was you, and so as we were concerned, it was just you to us and only you. I don't know that you were under oath at the last meeting, to testify for what you're saying you sent.
I'm not-
Have you testified under oath?
At the last meeting, I haven't been to it.
Okay, quite a few, right.
Probably standing.
Okay.
This is more, you know, relative to the private investigator and the information, whatever he came up with and whatever he presented to you, and the scope of where, what he was looking at, if he didn't talk to me. You know, trying to avoid you bringing that up, so I think it's, you know, but one of the things I did wanna talk about, I think that, you know, it-
Fair, I'm sorry, is this testimony as part of the hearing?
I don't, I don't know.
No, it was part of it. Well, you're talking about the private investigator and the scope of what he did.
I understand you're asking questions, that sounded like you're discussing-
Well, I don't expect them to answer any questions that I ask. So, if it sounded like a question, I don't expect anything. So, in regard to, you know, the Curetive Amendment, I mean, you know, the whole process of this, even just going through the, yeah, I'm getting back to my comment part, so you know, I'm gonna have to stay with that. I think, though, one of the issues that you're talking about approving this Curetive Amendment is the fact that now you have a private investigator that has quite numerous people, and one of the things about the Curetive Amendment is, is considering, you know, the, anytime you change the ordinance, you know, you have to consider things, especially in this case, what enforcement issues are you creating? Because this is a totally, like, different instance, whereas you're in a residential zone in a drug and alcohol treatment center. So, I think when you're considering what is on the paper there, in the ordinance I think about the approval, you really have not, you're not considering enforcement issues and rules. So, and those items, you know, could be in the report from the detectives.
I think I understand.
Yeah, I know. It got me out of thinking really what I wanted to say.
Well, let me just go back to our solicitor, and what I could say too, right now, this was, you say you dropped this off on yesterday?
Just for the record, that's a right to know request, right?
Yeah.
And that was for Mr. Bartolome?
Yeah, sorry. That's right, that's right. And how we got this here, I don't know. And again, as I'm saying, that this will be addressed, and we'll reply as we should, and, but we're, I'm not gonna do anything as the right to know officer until I make sure that I understand what was presented by the P.I. and the DVDs that were there so that I can watch them and understand them better. Understanding is, the Curetive Amendment really, again, I think we're getting ahead of ourselves, and we're talking about conditions, if in fact, this is passed this evening. Then we'll talk about the health, welfare, and safety of the citizens and the clients or the patients that'll be involved with this facility. But I think, at this time, I don't feel comfortable, except for maybe one or two. Robert, did you think that it was worth just maybe one or two, even this evening, and Ryan, correct me if we did say that, the Curetive Amendment, that's all we're addressing now? If this was to be approved this evening, we may have a couple of, what did you say, revisions?
You can approve the Curetive Amendment as presented, you can approve the Curetive Amendment with revisions, or you cannot approve the Curetive Amendment.
Okay.
To approve the amendment, whether with or without revisions, you have to first determine that the Curetive Amendment has validity. And the argument is that since we had a Section 302 hearing, and you determined that there was no drug and alcohol center in the R1 zone, and apparently Judge Ziblick also said the same, that maybe that validity issue has already been determined. But that's what you, you are here to do. As to the, let's just back up for the reports from the private investigator, I have not read that. It came in 11 o'clock last night, I just did not get to it. And it was my understanding in speaking with you earlier today, Brian, that you haven't had a chance thoroughly to do it either. I don't know about the other supervisor. So, to say that we're, you're relying upon that for this decision, I just don't think is fair, because it's not been looked at thoroughly by the, by the board, to my understanding. But if that's wrong, then I stand corrected.
Again, I am in the receipt of a, of a right to know, actually, two of them, Marty, correct?
There's one related to something else.
Sorry?
It's not related to the detective stuff.
Oh, it's not, no, but there are two right to know you dropped off today, okay. So, what I'm saying is, let us become more thorough before we do anything. It's so much premature right now for us to, to really respond.
I respect your comments, Mr. Barrett, but I just wanna make, just make my position clear on the record, is that I feel that the investigator was investigating your property and investigating people that testified at the last hearing. And the arguments that I've made in this case, the testimony of the people that offered testimony at the last time is germane, and this investigator was out there either to corroborate them or to impeach them, as Attorney Neander said. But I don't feel that, to say that this has nothing to do with the Curetive Amendment hearing, I think is not appropriate. The other point is that, Mr. Carasek, we haven't thoroughly reviewed it, I mean, you all indicated you did review it, you did look at the videotape, so this is-
No, no, let me, please let me interrupt you. This thing didn't come in until 11 o'clock last night. I've got a life of my own, and I got it, I saw it, we distributed, I don't know when you get it, I don't know how many pages it even is, so no. If I perused it, it was at best, the DVDs, just put it on high speed and see what was going on, that they remember quality, everything else. What I'm gonna say to this board of supervisors is that we sit down, do our own due diligence, and I, as the right to know officer, will respond. And I'll do that, and I'll look through the guidance of the Right to Know Commission and our solicitor, that's all I say.
I respect that, but I-
But don't, but please don't say that we've all, we know what it is. We don't.
I understand, and your statements that you made on the record are what they are. It's my position, even if you looked at it briefly or just perused it, you still had some contact with it, and still may use it in your case. And in that regard, I feel that it's appropriate that that person be subjected to testimony, that we have the opportunity to cross-examine and see his report, and see his photographs, and see his videotapes, which we're not doing. And for that reason, I would object to the board making a decision on this, until we have the opportunity to do that.
Okay.
And I just want, just for the record, I just wanna make my position clear.
Understood.
I join in that very quickly. I think it's ex parte evidence. If the record is clear, it's at least been viewed by and listened to, perhaps, by the board.
Well, don't say that.
I join, I join in the, the record will say what it will say.
Listen to me now, please. We sat and we said, what is, I mean, coming in with, our solicitor carried DVDs with them from Danner this afternoon. I mean, don't say we all sat and listened and watched it, okay? That, actually, that's not to be appreciated quite frankly.
I have to speak for myself.
You're saying, well, this is-
This is Marshall Anders, again, I join in Mr. Ferrari's position.
I didn't hear that, Marshall, what was it?
I join in Mr. Ferrari's position.
Okay, fine.
Just to reiterate, Mr. Barrett, you know, again, what may or may not be in part of this investigation may be germane to a conditional use hearing, is certainly not germane to something that is a conceptual use of the property. It's not an oversight that the applicant asks for an Curetive Amendment that is treated as a conditional use, as opposed to a permitted use, so that the board of supervisors would have that opportunity to review and place reasonable conditions on it. It was designed that way by the applicant, so that the county would have that opportunity. It may be concerned relative to future operations on the property, should be properly addressed at a conditional use hearing.
All right, so, is that being said, the positions are stated on the record, is anyone on the board prepared to make a motion with respect to this Curetive Amendment? If so, make the motion, see if you get a second, see if there's any public comment, and vote.
All right, I'll make the motion with provisos. And before stating those, I'd like to say that this is an anniversary. A year ago, we were just in almost exactly the same place, where we voted to accept an application for the conditional use amendment. The circumstances were somewhat different, but a group of neighbors then took us to court and demanded to stay, praising our ability to go any further, which we did not. In the meantime, I think about March, the applicants opened this facility as an inn. They have been operating ever since as an inn. It's debatable about whether it is an inn or not, there's been a lot of discussion about that, I won't go into it. But now, we're faced again with an application for conditional use in this Curetive Amendment. And my feeling is that we have two choices here. One is, we can deny it, and they can go forward with their inn. And we have no right to put any conditions on it or to control it. With a conditional use hearing, where we can put conditions on it, we can achieve some control. And I say for myself, just hearing some of the comments by nearby residents at the last hearing we did, which was the first time we'd heard real comments from people who were living in the vicinity of something that was operating, rather than something that was theoretically going to operate, I was very concerned. And I think, I think, speaking for us all, if I may, we're all concerned about, in some way, in a conditional use hearing, putting enough conditions on this that we can guarantee some sense of security and of quality of life to the people that live around this area, and not have them feel that this facility is impinging upon their privacy in any way. So, with that, I'm going to make this motion to accept the conditional, sorry, accept the Curetive Amendment, and I'm gonna add these things to it. It must include at least a minimum of 25 acres, that all activities related to treatment be onsite, and that, taking a figure from the first hearing we had, where it was mentioned by the applicants, that there be no more than 60 persons being treated at any one time. And I'll add those conditions, and, Mr. Chairman, would you call for a vote?
Yes, sir.
The second-
I will second Robert's motion.
Right, now you've gotta see through that. Any comments before you-
Well, no, no, you gotta wait until I vote.
No, you gotta get the comment before you vote.
Really?
Yeah.
I thought we went through that, right?
You have another hearing, it's another day, you've gotta ask for comment again.
All right, comments again.
Well, there's a motion on the floor, right?
We've got a motion and a second. And are there comments?
Do we have a second? Yes, I seconded, but we have to have public comments.
Okay.
This is a clown show.
I'm not, so I won't repeat it.
I'm sorry, if that was a comment, we did not hear it? Okay, all right, so, that's the case, Mr. Solicitor, we have a motion, and we have a second.
During no comment, you can vote.
No, I don't have a comment.
Okay.
First of all, your rationale is unbelievable.
Thank you.
By accepting conditional use, you're wanting to have something that doesn't belong in that room. Your plan-
We're not, we're not talking about whether it belongs or not, we're talking about a Curetive Amendment.
That's what he said, that's exact.
Well, your plan, commission, so the 400, you totally ignore it. Now, you're claiming it's conditional use now, you're saying, okay, we can put this facility in, in R1 zone, when it doesn't belong. And for you to vote for that at this point in time is-
We voted for that a year ago.
It doesn't matter how long it was, why has it been thrown out? You're wasting tax dollars for this citizen to Smithfield Township.
Our tax dollars are our problem.
But, but, but wait a minute, let me say, Mr. Schumacher, we're not wasting money-
Mr. Schumacher, I'm sick of this, I gotta say, this has been going on for a year. Let's move on and put conditions on this, so this facility's gonna operate, it can operate in a way that the people that live around it can have some sense of security and quality of life that was, is not impinged upon by people coming on their property or people annoying them, okay?
This is, this is Marshall Anders, again, can you hear me?
Arthur, one second, please, Brian Barrett speaking. I just wanted to say that, yes, plenty of money spent on it, not our idea, not our, look at, look at where we've been, how many courts we've been through, how many hearings, how many professionals we've had here. That's our cost, not a penny to you, not one penny to you or your residents. This is on Smithfield Township, so please don't say that we're spending money frivolously. We're responding to suits and everything else, and a court, and public hearings. So, having said that, I'm going to say that we have, we have a motion to approve, we have a second, I'm gonna vote against it. Motion carries, two to one.
Well, I don't know if a vote was taken.
Yeah.
I think you had a motion and a second, but you had to take a formal vote, assuming all the comments-
I think you had a motion and a second, but you had to take a formal vote, assuming all the comments were done.
All the comments were done.
Okay, so then you have to take a vote.
I have a motion and I had a second motion.
My comments are not done.
What?
My comments are not done.
How do you know?
I have a handout. I have this handout.
Okay, all right.
My comment is... What are your name, your name, please, ma'am? It always lays out hyphenary. Part of the determination as to the use of this and what us residents notified us about, that it was being already used after the opening, involved an inspection, an inspection by someone from Smithfield Township. I have a huge objection that they were given advance notice on that inspection because we all knew what was going on before that. And had they done the surprise inspection, they would have known what was done with that. You ignored that. You allowed them, in two days, to probably clear up what needed to be cleared up so that it didn't look like a facility.
What inspection are we speaking of?
You not have additional things delivered from out of state to an inn. And people cannot make reservations today that is. And by giving them notice, I think you gave them a fresh launch.
This is...
We all knew how, what it was operating on. It was an opening on March fifteenth. They had another test to do for that opening.
This is... This is Marshal Anders again. Each of you knows, you're sitting there, that none of you would want this facility next to your home. But it's okay to put it in somebody, next to somebody else's home 'cause it's in a part of the township that's divorced from the main part of it.
You cannot undo giving them that notice.
Yes, sir. Excuse me.
I, uh, would like to...
Sir, my apologies. Can you say your name again, please?
Danny Doubes, D-O-U-B-E-S.
Thank you, sir.
Was that the phone?
Going back to where we started, why would the, uh, private investigators brought in? Would you have brought those private investigators in if this thing didn't exist? If this, it does exist, bring the private investigators in. I then, wouldn't that knowledge be made public for transparency reasons alone?
Well, I think we did cover that and, and, and I, I tell you this, we're going to look into it. Uh, and, uh, well, again, we'll refer the advice of our solicitor. I think he expressed himself in, right in the middle of this, about how he feels. And, um, the other situation is there is a question, there's an obligation for us to respond within five working days. And, uh, that is public. So what I'm saying to you is, is that we're gonna do our due diligence and make sure that we make the right response. I am the right to know officer. I will ask for opinions from both of my fellow supervisors, uh, respond to, uh, Mr. Bartholomew, and, uh, and that will be public. And Mr. Bartholomew can share it. We can post it. You can repress it. It's right to know request. All the components.
Would it be prudent then not to, to vote on this today and wait till you get that knowledge? To be able to have a, a group more information?
I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna try to answer that again. Uh, all, all I know is, and again, uh, Ron, if you...
Well, let me just say, Mr. Chairman, again, you've been engaging in a, in a back and forth situation. That's not public comment. Public comment is public comment. It does not require you to respond. It does not require you to answer. Public comment, thank you, next person, thank you, next person, thank you. By you responding, you are causing further confusion in this whole mess. So just let the people comment and move on.
So I'm causing confusion. Thank you.
Not you're causing confusion, but you're adding additional information...
I understand. Thank you.
That may get us off track.
Thank you. Right, that's, uh, okay. Uh, yes, yes, ma'am.
Uh, my name is Ms. Katie Campbell. I'm, I really disturbed about what's happening here. I appreciate that you sent an investigator out. I would appreciate the call first, um, without the investigator coming out. Um, but something I'd like you to know is that there are established patterns about the going wrong of the inn. People come at certain times, they leave at certain times. The moment that the investigator contacted me, those patterns changed. It became different. The pharmacy started delivering after six o'clock before, at the investigator's meeting before then. I also think it was a very short period of time that the investigators were left here. I don't think they really got to see the whole picture of anything else occurring. I would really like for you guys, you know, to review all of their information and possibly question the investigators and see if they, what they really found out. You know, not just from pictures and videos, but from other talk from other people. I mean, that wasn't the purpose of hiring the investigators. Um, and in that way, you don't share it with everyone. But not a real conversation about what's going on here. So I have a B2 zone and I have an economic development zone. That's where I do, probably have time to move on. The inn is not open to the public. It's private. It's the only natural reservation I'm going to see that place is coming out in the train form. I don't know any game that current people play much of a role, not because they have citizenship. And I really learned about the safety of my family. I'm not worried about the resale value for me because this is my perfect dream home. This is where my family plans on being. This is where we decided to set up our generational stake. I was told it was gonna be a golf course and I know that things could change. Um, that's understandable. But changing from an R1 type use to a B2 use to, uh, commercial use in a residential zone, for how many of you do that, is not acceptable. And as the inn, as they call themselves, as all the patients are walking around outside of the device, they can leave at any time. They may not be allowed to go back to the inn, but they remain in our township, asking for help, a ride to Popville, and borrow some money, go where I can eat. People don't really expect in a residential neighborhood. I cannot let my children go outside on the simple bus. I had to get a security system, put it in my home, to make sure that if for the one minute I turn away from my children, something doesn't happen to them. I am a great believer in people begging for help if they leave. In the appropriately zoned location. If you allow this to become, what if you're a lot filming? They're just giving somebody the right to do that wherever they want. And they're not the president that used that for Smithfield. Then somebody else might want to make another location a lot filming. Hey, if they did it to the inn, they can do it for us. That's still a way to rank for me. I'm not a Smithfield resident, but I do share a border with Smithfield, right? And I'm excited where I am. So I just wanna make clear here that it's really disappointing. I, I really believe in a democratic system, like you can leave the businesses free. Uh, usually with people having the right to live unimpeded in their home. They're not having to feel like they have to stay inside. It's hard enough being a pandemic. Having three children and varying ages. I can keep them inside all day. I, I'm really shocked for living this way. And I just put it all that you would understand that I want these people to get treatment and we correct, we say it's location. This is R1. Please, let me keep it R1.
Marty, you can't talk seven times. This is your last round.
This is the comment period.
I've commented, I've commented for ten minutes already, Ron, all right?
Marty, Marty.
I've commented for ten minutes already. So your comments had time. There wasn't a comment that they were talking about these...
Marty, I, you don't need to argue with our solicitor.
He's arguing with me.
He didn't argue with you. He tried to tell you that, you know, maybe seven or eight comments is a couple too many.
They weren't comments.
Well, there were questions, actually.
Were they making comments then? I mean...
Marty, what's your comment?
For God's sake. Why did I have to deal with you guys from the beginning? This was incredible. That's why I had, I didn't come to all of you. So Mrs. Wolf, I mentioned that at least doing this curative amendment is gonna allow us some, uh, chance to control.
And they're very smart.
Yeah, they're very smart.
Because, uh, the key word that Mr. Wolf used, that is right in the ordinance, is reasonable condition. They're gonna fight. If you try to even, even if you try to add something first, the food is damages for any of their people that may injure somebody, property damage, any of that, that's, 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 they're gonna fight that. You're gonna be able to throw little crumbs out there. You're not gonna control anything. So, you know, you think by doing this and going to conditional use, that you're gonna put conditions on that are gonna, that's not gonna happen. That's just unreasonable to think.
Thank you for having so much faith in us.
It doesn't matter. They, they have to agree to it to be reasonable, you know?
No, they don't, Marty. Marty, you probably even lived through this. They do not have to agree. If they don't agree, one of the judges in Commonwealth Court will...
Exactly.
Tell them to.
And you gotta prove it's reasonable.
And it's a simple thing to do. You do it common sense and you don't go outside the bonds. We prevailed twice, Marty, in the courts. Now, I'll just say one thing, we lost one. Maybe, maybe that was fifteen years ago where a judge did come back and he'd said, "You're unreasonable in your request." And we had twenty-two conditions. He cut them down to eighteen. Said, "That's all I'm saying." I believe in the court system and they have the...
These are a little bit more difficult, uh, uh, circumstances you have to deal with. Uh, so, but I wanna go...
But that's, that's your opinion.
It is. That's why he used, he got that word reasonable on the record.
What would he put in, what would he say? Unreasonable conditions will be considered?
He didn't have to say that word at all. It's clear what they're gonna have him have on. So...
Right, so, so now you're speaker for him. All right, what else, sir?
Well, I, I tried to use logic, you know, even in the legal. That's just the way I believe.
I can't hear you.
Did I talk? Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I still have one of the rea- facts. So, um, you know, we've been going through this process and I know everybody, you know, uh, some people obviously are annoyed with the statement so long, Mr. Wolf, not. But, um, you know, the, the applicant played the PR game from the beginning. Before we even had any hearings, one of you mentioned on TV about, um, um, misinformation. Before you even had a hearing, one of them in person, misinformation. Two people at the first hearing for, um, standing mentioned misinformation. Their, their points were already out there. They have a full-time PR person that works for them. So then we go through the hearings and, you know, at one point, um, one of the supervisors says, "As it's getting along being costly, um, we're just doing this as, as a courtesy." It's like, oh, and, uh, Mr. actually, Swimmer was standing right next to him and he agreed. So, you know, this whole process has been, for some reason, rushed. And then, so you have information for five months about drug deliveries and everything, you know, that is inconsistent with an inn. Uh, you know, insurance companies, do they pay for your extended stay vacation? That was in quotations because that's what it says in the, in the zoning book. Of course not. And I could go through all the list of other things. They also mentioned, uh, you know, when they tried to ask questions about how they handle drugs there now, what it is, it's a hip up and right away you give up. Well, did you ask those questions during the hearings and did they answer them? Of course they did. So now all of a sudden they can't. And it's nothing personal. So, um, and then we get to the curative amendment. And, uh, you know, you go through the hearing, um, and, uh, there are no revisions until now. But, uh, it just, uh, everything is just more, seems like it's more time sensitive, uh, on every half and, and, uh, actually looking at the logic of the situation.
I would just like to make one more comment, just to, but the safety and the security of the people that live in that area, whether they're in Smithfield Township on that side of the golf course or on Mount Rose and Shepherd and everybody else.
Yep.
You guys are doing a curative amendment for one business inn that doesn't belong in R1 from the beginning. This is a trial. I agree with everything that, that Katie Campbell just said. By you doing this, you're also creating a liability for the township. Because if any of these people out of this facility injure or hurt anybody in that surrounding area, I think you know what's gonna happen.
Oh, tell me.
Well, I think probably whoever did the damage will get sued. But obviously, if you create that potential, you have the ability also to be sued.
Okay.
And I, I, it's a comedy. I don't understand the motivation here. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. So, are there any other comments, please?
If there are none, Mr. Chairman, please take a vote.
Okay, we have a, we have the, uh, situation where we had a, uh, I guess we did go through that, right?
My motion and the second.
All right, and we do have a second motion by Robert, second by Jacob. Uh, and, uh, the vote will be taken now in your votes.
Aye.
Aye.
May I propose, Ron, that we close this session?
There's, it was just on for vote. Obviously, uh, I have to write an opinion, which will be out shortly since, I think, forty-five days started running as of, uh, August eleventh. Although, under municipal curative amendment, it's, it's really reversed. If an opinion isn't written, yeah, the application is deemed denied, so.
And, uh, we'll, we'll assure that that doesn't happen.
I will get that, get that out based upon that. And, uh, and I will address the comments by Attorney, uh, Lehman and Attorney Anders and Attorney Ferrari with respect to the, uh, public investigator so that they have something of record. If they want to challenge that, they at least have some basis for that. So I'll, I'll make sure that it's part of the, the written decision.
Before we adjourn, do you want to talk about the, uh, Wishville ambulance letter?
Yeah, we can put that in. We also have the, the meeting minutes. You have to...
Sure.
The vote off.
Yeah, we're good. And we have another. He's here, he's eager. And appreciate it. Okay, we did receive a request of Wishville Emergency Ambulance to appoint one of our supervisors to their advisory board, not their voting board.
Right.
And, uh, and they indicated in here when they meet, where they meet, what times they meet. So I would like to make a motion that we appoint Jacob Pry to be our...
Defensively.
So, we, okay, we've got, we've got...
Yes, I know you, you said enough.
And I also would like to, uh, suggest that we appoint an attorney.
I promise I would do something two months ago and I just haven't got to. I'm already going to the firehouse.
Me too.
Okay.
Yes, yes, we are.
And I'll be the alternate.
So are you going with the, your own motion?
Thank you.
Um, I made the motion.
Hey, Jim.
Robert really seconded the motion.
I hope you get a chance to see the Wishville ambulance EMS.
I get a chance to see this for me.
Okay. Well, I'll vote aye on that motion then. Huh? Is there another one? Okay, well, I'll wait for Robert.
Yeah, and Robert as an alternate.
And Robert, Robert seconded that, so.
And he seconded. And I say all the bigger...
Uh, EMS. Uh, EMS, aye.
Thank you.
Robert, what is your vote on that?
We voted aye. Yeah, you said aye.
Did you vote in favor? Okay. Thank you, I follow.
All right, and then the, uh, the minutes of the, uh...
Yeah, and the minutes for the, uh, meeting of, was it work session? I forget. Yeah, work session, September second, and they're all in order, and, uh, I have no problem with them, we have plenty of time to get them through.
Yep.
And that's it.
I'll, I'll make a motion, will you approve them then?
I'll second the motion all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, mm-hmm. Okay, this...
Just adjournment.
Yeah.
Yep.
Julia, what, what time is it? Do you want to take a read on it?
I didn't know they, uh, they were publishing it.
I know, and then all of a sudden it came out and over, I don't even...
I thought it was just online there. Okay, all right, um, well, I'll announce. That was, we were in executive session regarding, uh, do I say for that? From two forty to approximately three, three twenty this afternoon? Then I suppose...
It dealt with, um, a meeting with counsel regarding confidential client information.
Okay. So, so noted. Then I'll, I'll make a motion that we adjourn at...
Four fifty-five P.M.
Four fifty-five P.M.
Hallelujah.
Hallelujah. I'll tell you what...
Someone want to second the motion?
I'll second the motion. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.